Everybody to the first meeting, uh, back to school for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, we are going with roll call. Everyone is here with the exception of Ms. McGuire, who had a prior engagement. Report on closed session actions. We had a settlement agreement approval, oh, in closed session, the board voted to approve a settlement agreement in special education case SE twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six-oh-one. The vote was for zero. And that will take us to our pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Strakula, would you do us the honor, please, sir?
Everybody, please stand. Right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. That'll take us to item seven, ROP report. Mr. Rose.
Last week, on, yeah, last week on the Friday, and the entire program in East Gable, ROP had an staff services, it was hell in Walnut High School, and they offered a good start. The energy is there, the teacher is ready to go. That, that one good thing, positive, I think my experience from, I was there, and my experience that they were all positive, and they were all excited about another school year there. That's, that's good. And the second one, the budget that was approved by the county was positive certification. It is balanced now, under the good leadership, Dr. Downing, and entire staff there, and they're on the roll, they're ready to, to serve the students. Back to you, Peterson.
Thank you, sir. That'll take us to our superintendent report, Dr. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. It is exciting times. We have begun the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and as this board knows, and as we shared with our community, we have a really profound theme this year. The theme is this is home, right? It really speaks to our community, it speaks to our family nature that we have, and it really speaks to the message that we're spending, sharing with our students as well as our staff, that we belong here, that we are needed here, and that you are welcome here, right? And so, uh, it is evident throughout, uh, the beginning stages of our school year, how we've expressed that. I'm really proud of the work that's happened throughout the district in preparation of our schools, the seamless opening and welcoming kids in for the first day. I'd even venture to go back the week prior, and how we opened up our resource fair, uh, through Jennifer Helguera, as well as Roxanna, in making sure that the most neediest of students had the materials and school supplies in getting ready for that first day. So, really incredible to see the great work that's happened throughout, really, uh, just pleased to see the work from all of our certificated, as well of, as well as our classified staff in preparing for our students. And more sobering news, as you all know, is that we do have some work to do, and the good challenge that we have in making sure that we fulfill our pillar for student success, which is fiscal responsibility. And as you know, this board approved a positive budget and was certified by the county for positive budgets. And so, yet, the challenges ahead for us are real. And so, I want to, I want to ask Kirill Branford to share with you and remind us as a board of those unique challenges ahead as it relates to, uh, working on and establishing a budget stabilization plan. So, Kirill, please.
Thank you, Dr. Kim. Good evening, board. So, I'll start with the state budget. So, the enacted budget was approved by the governor, and pretty much all of the May revision levels were approved. But however, we do see fluctuations in the receipt of revenues in the state, and largely due to the uncertainty. As you know, there are a lot of effects to the budget coming from the federal on down, and so, with tariffs, unemployment increase, and those things does affect the receipts of our revenues and just how the economy performs. And so, some of that does, you know, go down to districts. We also saw, um, where issues with districts' federal funding, a lot of freezing of federal funding. And so, those were ta, were challenged in court, and ultimately, they were, most of those were released. But it's that uncertainty, you never know what's going to happen next, and so, it creates that angst in the economy, and so, we just have to be keeping up with it day to day, just to see how it impacts district. Now, going back to the May revision, for districts, there were a couple of additional fundings that were promised, and they did materialize, and so, some of those weren't adopted in the budget. And one of those was the discretionary block grant. Again, it's discretionary, it's one time, and so, that type of funding is not something we can look to stabilize our budget in the long, long term. We also received some increased funding for TK. That comes with some strings. Again, that was intended for us to lower the, the ratio, so we were at twelve to one, we're expected to be ten to one this year. And so, those additional funding will be spent due to implementing that new ratio. Um, with that said, as Dr. Kim mentioned, we did adopt a positive budget. However, how we balanced the budget was also presented, where we will have to make some decisions around reductions on our cuts. And so, we did start that conversation, we had many conversations about it, and we also had a resolution that was approved in June that shows that we will need to make approximately one point five million dollars in reductions next year, as well as another one point two million the following year. And so, as we start developing and adjusting the budget, we'll have to now implement those reductions. And so, it's going to take a lot of conversations with our education partners to really identify the specifics of how we adopt those and implement those cuts. And so, Dr. Kim will, of course, talk about the big picture, how we will start that conversation and get ready to bring specifics to you for approval. Thank you. Back to you, Dr. Kim.
Thank you, Ms. Branford. And as she speaks around that, we've had and already established some of those conversations dating back to last school year. We have incredible partners with our labor leadership, uh, with Sue Hook, our president of COEA, along with, uh, Robert Montes, the president of CSEA, and they've been incredible in terms of collaboration, communicating, being involved in those discussions. And our full intention is that we will continue to gather their feedback, their input, and frankly, their advice as we think about and, and create a budget stabilization plan, and as I present to you guys a recommendation over the course of this year. So, that is my commitment to you guys, uh, and in making sure that we are maintaining fiscal stability in our school district. The last piece, if I may add, in my report is, uh, super excited that we have our, uh, beginning of our high school fall athletics, and one key highlight is that our high school football team, the Chargers, will be playing at the home of the Los Angeles Rams at SoFi Stadium on August twenty-eighth. Uh, the Rams are clearly the greatest NFL team out there, so, but, home of the Rams, and, uh, we're looking forward to seeing our Chargers playing against Upland High School next Thursday. What an incredible experience for our students and our staff, and we're looking forward to that experience. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kim. That'll take us to item ten, presentations, district of choice enrollment data presentation for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Dr. Kim?
All right. Tonight, uh, as he is preparing to, um, come up to the podium, we have our annual requirement to present to this board our data as it relates to enrollment of students through the district of choice program. In addition to that, uh, Mr. Joey Strakula will be presenting, uh, really pertinent information as it relates to enrollment thus far for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, along with some general attendance data that we've captured thus far. So, with that, Mr. Strakula, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kim, Mr. Peterson. Great to see everybody again. Welcome back. Cannot believe we're starting here, so very, very exciting. Um, as Dr. Kim mentioned, again, annually, we are required by the CDE to report out on our DOC or district of choice numbers. Um, some reminders, we are now in year six of district of choice, and we'll kind of see some slides here that'll show, um, overall numbers over these past six years. And also, keep in mind, as a reminder, as part of the district of choice agreement, uh, we are not allowed to enroll students from Azusa, Pomona, and Roland Unified, um, when it comes to district of choice. Okay, so this year, um, so keep in mind, when we have district of choice applications, the window is October first to December thirty-first. So, the thirty-six applications were last school year, two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, when we are only allowed to receive those applications. So, we have thirty-six total. Out of those thirty-six, uh, thirty-six were approved to come to our school district, meaning they weren't from any of those residing districts that I mentioned earlier, there wasn't any duplicates. Um, out of those thirty-six, seven decided to enroll, um, at different districts for various reasons, whether it's childcare, they move, transportation, um, particular programs, um, caregiver issues, whatever the case that, that may be. So, we ended up having a total of twenty-nine, um, district of choice applications here, and we did have ten of our students live in our district boundaries that went to another district on a district of choice as well. Uh, this is the demographic breakdown by different race and or ethnic groups. This is a breakdown by male, female students, uh, many students on IEPs or individual education plans, uh, two EL students, uh, seventeen students on free reduced lunch, and at this point in time, out of the thirty-six applications, um, we are not required to provide any type of transportation for those families. We pulled from thirteen surrounding districts out of our thirty-six applications, uh, ranging from Balden Park, Monobello, um, West Covina, um, Rialto, that's a heck of a drive, right? We had two students there, um, coming from the Rialto area on district of choice for this school year. Advertising, we will start again advertising. So, last year, actually, we had a really cool, um, banner here and, um, digital model in the West Covina Mall. I don't know if anybody goes to the mall anymore nowadays, but, uh, we had a one up in the West Covina Mall here. Again, keeping in mind, we will start advertising for next school year, for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, and that window opens up October first, closes December thirty-first. Um, again, kind of part of the frustration with this program, uh, families will literally have to know before, you know, January first and the Rose Bowl hits, um, what school district they will be going to the following year. So, that is a challenge. Uh, we do get a lot of families in the spring that inquire about district of choice, um, but unfortunately, at that time, we have to let them know they'll have to wait a whole nother cycle, um, before they can enroll in the district of choice program. So, we do our best to try to get the word out as much as we can. Um, there's no fees to apply, um, they can rescind at any point in time, so that is our message. If they're not sure, at least apply, get it on file, so they meet that deadline of thirty-first This is our data over the last six years, uh, so that middle column is applications received, and that right column is new students that enroll in district of choice. So, you notice for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, um, we de, we did receive thirty-six applications, but only sixteen of those are new students that enrolled in our district. So, that means some of the other students might have been on industry transfer, and they applied for district of choice. Um, some of the families might have been on Allen Bill, meaning if you work in the district for ten hours or more, four days a week, um, you're eligible for the Allen Bill. Um, those families then decided to apply for district of choice and, um, go over in that thirty-six, but ultimately, sixteen are new students to the district. Bless you. Before we move on to my favorite topic of TK and Kinder, are there any questions in regards to district of choice?
Are we still able to pull from all districts in our area? Or some?
Yeah, so Azusa, Pomona, and Roland are the three in our local area that we're not able to pull from, but all Australian districts we are.
So, we have ten students that were transferring out through district of choice. Um, in the event that students transfer out, obviously, with district of choice, they don't necessarily need to have a specific cause or reason why they're able to do that in any other participating district. But is that something where the district of choice capturing data or information has to apply, even if it's optionally provided or voluntarily provided?
Absolutely, yeah, we do so. Even like a permit when families request to leave, so even if they're requesting leave on a DOC, even though they don't need a permission, we definitely talk to those ten families, um, and ask what their reasons are. Is it a program? Is it transportation? Is it childcare? Is it a sibling over there? And again, they're all various reasons.
Okay, so anecdotally, it's kind of a little bit of everything?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
There's nothing specific that?
No, nothing correct, yeah.
And I also had a question in the case of the demographics of the students coming in, um, wrote down the, then by in terms of whether they have IEPs or English learning order or pre-reduced price lunch. I was curious about the pre-reduced price lunch and what type of effect that has in light of, say, the California providing meals regardless for all students, but what kind of, what effect does that designation have in terms of those students coming in?
So, they would also be eligible for other programs like, uh, reduced fees for testing and IBAP world, um, any type of other, uh, economic need and help, but to your point, all kids do get those free meals anyhow. Um, it's just one of the data points on district of choice that we have to spell out when it comes to the public presentation. Yeah. Good question.
Couple of questions. Yes, I saw the ad at the West Covina Mall. How long will the ad be displaying at the mall?
So, we display it during the window of the district of choice application, open in October first through December thirty-first.
Did I see something in the mall? Here Charter Oak in it? That's not it, right? The ads? I'm a little confused. Anyway, I saw one, one ad about Charter Oak. I don't know what it was.
That was, that was an ad for?
Yeah, so the, on the slide, the one I showed you was the one, the actual ad that we had in the West Covina Mall, um, last, uh, fall in twenty-twenty-four for district of choice.
Oh, okay.
And so, we'll do that again, so we'll work with that same company, um, and starting late September, October through December, that ad will be displayed. Yeah.
One last question, following the, got to equalize, question on the ten students who left the district by district of choice, you, do you have any idea where they all went?
Actually, do. Um, they all went to one district called the Walnut Unified School District, actually.
All of them?
All, all ten. That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You are welcome. Okay, so now for our TK Kinder rollout here, so again, uh, we made a big push this year to have, um, advertisements for our TK Kinder program statewide now, in the state of California, everybody is on the same pace as far as age goes. So, last year, our district made a decision that we were going to bump the age for TK down to four, um, even though technically, we still had another year. So, now, every district around us or in the state of California, um, is now on the same page as far as age goes. So, there's no, uh, ability for us to advertise, oh, we, we take your child earlier. Um, last year, we did end up getting thirty-seven students by doing that, um, so this year, we're all on the, on the same playing fields. Uh, we did, um, go with a company called Postcard Mania, and just to give you some numbers, uh, as far as advertising go, we had a hundred and seven thousand, uh, Google ads, uh, twenty-three thousand on Facebook, Instagram, sixteen thousand Gmail ads, uh, forty-one thousand behavior ads, like the algorithms, and then, uh, twenty thousand connected TV ads, so those you have smart TVs when you turn your TV on, you see ads, um, that's what it is right there as well. Uh, we also did twenty-five hundred Mellors in the area, uh, that's that bottom card on the left, uh, to our families, really encouraging them to enroll here for our TK District-wide enrollment, so this is a snapshot, actually, as of this morning, um, our district-wide enrollment over the past four years. Um, I'll get to in a second, a couple of slides as far as demographer projections with the, uh, decline enrollment, but if you just look at comparisons from, um, this morning, district-wide, to the, uh, end of last school year, in the blue column, twenty-four, twenty-five, you can see on the right, um, certain sites actually have a couple more kids than we did last year, um, but overall, we're down roughly about a hundred and thirteen. Uh, keep in mind, enrollment does fluctuate, um, over the next couple of months, um, our CBET's data is October fifth, uh, but usually by the mid-September, so we, the dust settles, and we should have a pretty good idea, uh, number-wise, district-wide, where we are, um, from total enrollment. Uh, this is back to our TK, um, if you look at the, the COVID birth rates, uh, they're saying this year and next are supposed to be a four percent drop in birth rates, uh, from a COVID standpoint, so we are supposed to feel the effect this year. Um, we're only down five kids right now, so at this time, um, that's really good. Uh, we are anticipating it to be a little lower this year, so we actually held, um, quite well in our TK numbers across the board, uh, so excited about that. Overall elementary enrollment, um, from last year, twenty-four, twenty-five, to this year, we are down roughly this morning about sixty-seven students or so, um, at our, uh, primary levels. Uh, secondary-wide, again, uh, we are down, uh, roughly fifty kids or so, if I'm doing my math correctly, give or take, um, this year, which again, was definitely anticipated, um, and projected. Uh, this is ADA, so the last two slides was enrollment. This is actual average daily attendance, meaning what does your attendance look like? Um, and I want to just point this out, because I know we have a lot of things going on in our society, politically and things of that nature here, so, um, we are actually averaging, uh, through the first week of school, a ninety-seven point three percent attendance rate, um, which is really, really good. To give you perspective, we ended last year averaging ninety-three percent. So, right now, it doesn't appear at this time, all the outside noise has been impacting our kiddos, so our kiddos are coming to school, um, which is awesome and great to see, right? So, that is the most important numbers, we want to make sure, uh, kiddos are coming and getting education every day. So, if we can hover around the ninety-seven percentile the rest of the year, that would be phenomenal. Um, so again, mentioned earlier, uh, we did work with a, a demographer, uh, cooperative strategies a couple of years ago, uh, that gave us, uh, roughly ten-year projection of where we are going, um, as a district, uh, used various factors, uh, birth rates, uh, census data, uh, building permits that are pulled to kind of give a projection of where they think we're going to be as a district broken down by school. Uh, they have three ranges, low, high, and the recommended, so kind of in the middle, so we took the recommended one here. Um, in fact, if you look at the next slide, it's a little user-friendly for your eyes, um, that shows where they are projecting our district to be at in twenty, thirty-two, thirty-three. Uh, so district-wide, they're looking at about a little less than four thousand. Uh, the thing that sticks out to me, um, it's not a cliff where you just fall right off, so you do see kind of a gradual decline, which as a district, we can prepare for that through attrition and all that good stuff, um, but we'll see how, you know, accurate that is, because again, they're just projections. And to kind of give you an idea here, so, if you look at that first column, uh, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, uh, they projected us to be at thirty-nine, fifty-four minus the alternative sites. We actually came in about a hundred higher, uh, which is great. Um, you know, we are a hundred less than actual last year's data, but, um, at this point in time, um, we are kind of outpacing the demograph, the demographers', um, projections. Uh, next year, their projection's at thirty-eight, sixty-nine, and then thirty-eight, eighteen. So, again, and it's just not a Charter Oak thing, the majority of districts in our area definitely are experiencing, uh, decline enrollment. And I think I just showed that one, and that is it?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Um, in the TK classroom enrollment, you had a slide showing that data, and then a subsequent slide of the elementary enrollment. Are the TK numbers essentially out or removed from the elementary enrollment and not included within that even if they're at those sites?
They are, yeah. So, those TK numbers, so elementary enrollment is, uh, TK through six.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, the next slide does include all?
It does include, yeah. So, we just highlighted TK, because that's been our real, real big push and focus. Um, again, we were anticipating a drop in our TK numbers, but in fact, we, we ended up holding pretty good. Yeah.
And then, um, for our ADA, coming in at ninety-seven point three percent average to the first week, right, strong, um, do we have a comparison to previous year's first week? I mean, I hypothesize that maybe the first week may be, um, a little stronger times of attendance, um, so do we have any?
We do, and, um, typically, your first week is very, very strong. Um, and then, by Halloween time, you start to see a little dip, uh, then the flu season hits, you see a little further dip, um, and then towards springtime, we see a dip back this way, kids want to come back to class parties and all that good stuff before they go for the summer. Um, but historically, if you look at our data, that ninety-seven percent, um, typically has not held in the last couple of years post-COVID. Uh, so last year, at this time, we were also in the high nineties, and then finished the year averaging about ninety-three percent, which is about normal during the post-COVID world. Uh, pre-COVID, we actually held that ninety-seven percent, um, pretty much all year long. Yeah. Good question.
A phone question. Two at each school?
For TK, two at each school, that is correct. Yeah, every school has two TK classes, uh-huh.
Eighteen, nineteen, one?
Uh, twenty to one, we need maxed out, yeah. Mm-hmm.
All right. Good job.
All right, thank you.
Item eleven, public comments, and just a reminder, uh, each student gets three minutes and it's twenty minutes per control. Mr. Montes.
Thank you, Greg. Hold my glasses first. Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, administration, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Montes, I am the chapter president for CSEA, chapter three oh nine. I want to begin by commending the district on this year's theme, welcome home. The ideas behind it, that we all belong, that we all are needed, we pres, we precisely are precisely what create a strong and supportive educational community. It is in the spirit of upholding that very theme that I need to speak to you this evening. I want to share two incidents from last year, while separate, challenged this feeling of home. The first incident occurred with me, wherein I received an email from a district manager and directives regarding union business. The tenor of the email found significantly short of the professional and respectful communication required to make someone feel they belong. I was able to have a conversation with the superintendent, and the matter was corrected. The second incident happened with one of our retired members, someone who gave decades of service to this district. This member was treated with a lack of dignity by a site administrator and another manager. The entire situation was contrary to the idea that our long-serving employees are valued and needed. We met with the assistant superintendent of human resources, and we were able to address the procedural issue. In our conversation about these events, it was explained that the management responsible could not be forced to apologize, and we understood that a forced apology is not genuine. However, the common thread is a lack of personnel accountability. How can our members feel like they are home when professional disrespect is met with silence? A voluntary apology is about more than words. It's an act of leadership that rebuilds trust and affirms that every single person in the district family belongs. So, I believe you with the, so I leave you with this question. If you are truly building a home for everyone, how can we tolerate a culture where management can disregard the dignity of our employees without any effort to restore their relationship? The theme, welcome home, is promised to all of us. Right now, our members, our promise feels at risk of being broken. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Suli Peña.
I am Suli Peña, I am a parent of a student in Charter Oak High School. I am here to ask you to review your special education department's trainings and practices. Children with an IEP should have access to the same opportunities as all kids. This system has failed Lexi. She did not get what she needed for years. Please don't leave others behind like she was. I am here for Lexi Buntain. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Brittany Altamorano? I hope I said that right.
Altamorano, it's okay. Good evening, I am Brittany Altamorano, my son is three and has an IEP. I am here to advocate for Lexi and bring your attention to kids like Lexi who are left behind. I am here for Lexi Buntain.
Thank you, ma'am. Lisa Britt?
My name is Lisa Britt. My son had an IEP at this district, Cody Britt. I am so sad to learn that the problems I incurred at Charter Oak are still incurring. This district would not give my son what he needed. I unfortunately had to homeschool my son to get him to graduate. Please consider how you are running your special education department. Please consider how you are running your special education department. It doesn't serve students. I am here for Lexi Buntain.
Thank you, ma'am. Margarita Gonzalez?
Good evening, everyone. I am Margarita Gonzalez, and I'm a parent of Braden Mitchell Gonzalez. He's eight years old. He's attending a Willow Elementary School. And Frankie Javier Espino, he's attending a Canyon View Elementary School. Both of them have an IEPs, and I have a very bad experience also. And I had to get an attorney to deal with the special education for Frankie. We are here to let you know our special education department is failing, not serving with the proper services for our children's, and I'm here for Lexi Buntain. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Paul Resendez?
Hello, my name is Paul Resendez. I'm here to support Lexi Buntain. I want all children to have access to an education that gives them opportunities. Lexi fell through the cracks. Please don't let this continue. How can you stop this, please? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tony Whittingslow?
Hi. I'm Tony Whittingslow. I have, I'm a parent of a child that had an IEP. His counselor and IEP team won't call me back. They canceled his IEP and I don't know why. He goes to Charter Oak, and they put him in classes he didn't need. And we're trying to figure it out, and I'm also here for Lexi Buntain. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Aracela Ferrer?
Hi, I'm Araceli Ferrer, and I'm also an adopted parent and a child with, a child with an IEP. Of foster and adopted parents are called to raise children and are also the reality of navigating a special education department. It's intimidating, frustrating, and exhausting. Adopted and fostered children go through tremendous trauma typically, and their adopted families deal with the educational injustice on top of that. We need an IEP team that is collaborative and will partner with parents instead of creating another obstacle for fostered children and their families to overcome. I'm here for Lexi Buntain.
Thank you, ma'am. Alejandra Gomez?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alejandra Gomez Dali. I work with adopted parents, and I wish all kids in the foster system could have parents like Lexi does. Kids like Lexi and their family should not endure what they are going through. Please ask why so many parents are here tonight. The special education department does not serve students. It maintains an unjust system that intensifies inequality. I am here for Lexi Buntain. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Iris Abrego?
Good evening, everyone. I am Iris Abrego. I am a social worker, and you and I have the same goal, to help children. That's why we are here. Lexi was not helped. Your special education department fell her. Let's break the system of leaving kids behind.
Thank you, ma'am. Teresa Buntain?
My name is Teresa Buntain. I am Lexi Buntain's mom. I adopted her. I've also had 11 foster and adoptive children attend Charter Oak schools. There is a huge difference between how my kids with IEPs fare at Charter Oak. In a word, poorly, very poorly. My daughter Lexi slept through the cracks here. The last two years have been very bad for her. Why should kids with IEPs have less opportunities because they have IEPs? There are low expectations for kids with IEPs. Her IEP team wanted to be right. They didn't want to help her. We got take it or leave it offers from your special education department.
Thank you, ma'am. Michael Buntain?
Good evening, board members. I am Michael Buntain, father of Lexi and her brother Dylan. We wanted board members to know the unbelievable obstacles we have had to overcome to get Lexi an appropriate education from this district. Ask why districts are experiencing a decline. It's not just because people move, it's because we can't get over IEP teams to provide appropriate education. I don't think the information you get about how your special education department is accurate, because if you knew how it functioned, you would never be okay with it. I'm here for Lexi Buntain. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have a card that just says public comment, but there's no name attributed to it that anybody, I don't want to leave anybody off. Okay. Mr. Portillo?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I request that we, the board direct the superintendent to respond to, to the pericostal.
Yeah, he's taking notes. I'm sure he's going to assaultate that.
Thank you.
For those who spoke before me, your advocacy is commended. Takes a lot of guts if you're not used to doing this. I'm here to talk, the card reads criminality and violations of the labor contract between Charter Oak and the teachers. This occurred many years ago, but the thread is, the thread in the theme is the same, not taking care of business when wrongs are being had. Listen closely. Back in 2007, August, the end of the school year, Julie Bach Harrison, a certificated instructor at Royal Oak Middle School in the Odyssey program, reported being left alone in a classroom seven to one, and at times 140 to one. Serious concerns about the unprofessional conduct and performance regarding her colleagues in the classroom. Julie Bach Harrison, Scott Wollam, the former principal, and Norm Kershamon, the interim superintendent, confirmed that Julie's Bach's reference of Dom and Roger violated both the COE, COEA contract with COUSD labor agreement and therefore employee contracts through their daily abandonment of the workplace assigned. What was occurring is that the morning break, the lunch break would happen, and these teachers would not return to class and leave two teachers with the remaining 140 students. Julie Bach, Julie Bach, Julie Bach described being left alone with the numbers that I've told you after the students returned from lunch break. The practice, this is important. According to the principal, Scott Wollam, the practice has never been approved and it appeared to persist, especially in the current eighth grade under Dom and Roger. Responsibility for compliance rests with the COUSD governing board members, administrators, and the COEA leadership. They must ensure that labor contract is explicitly upheld, including required certificated instructional hours. To me, that's important, but I'm not too aware of instructional hours. My questions are, was informal investigation taken? Two, what were the findings of any investigation? Three, were any discipline actions taken against a certificated employees who abandoned the assigned workplace per labor agreement? These are violations, and I'm going to continue because it's important. These are violations of the California Penal Code 182A1 and Penal Code 487, the abandoning contractual workplace assignment. These are felonies and sophisticated practice and lack of professionalism. Leaving students in the classroom with all those is unsafe, and they were denied full inequitable access to the required instructional time. And yet, these instructors, employees continue to prevail as employees here. I want to know what has occurred, what actions were taken?
For clarification purposes, you're talking something that happened in 2007?
It doesn't matter.
I'm asking, I'm asking you.
You're not supposed to speak during comments.
Yeah, for clarification purposes, we are able to ask, but that's all right. Don't worry about it. I'm good. I'm good. Thank you, sir. Never mind. Have a good day.
Oh, that's the way it is. That's the way politics are now, on and off. I only want to say what I want to hear.
Have a good day. Thank you.
That's it, okay? The culture prevails.
Mr. Peterson, you, I mean, you had the superintendent look in there as well. I mean, we need some, we need some clarifications where we're at with this situation.
12A1, public hearing regarding an increase to statutory double fund of ownership in commercial industries development projects. I'll go ahead and open the hearing now. Are there any cards? All right, Mr. Portillo, I believe you have cards on this. This is regarding the fee?
Yeah, the developer fees. The developer fees.
And will there, will there be a presentation? Because they might answer the question.
There'd be a short clarification, information, yes, provided.
I prefer after the presentation.
All right, is there anybody else who would like to come forward? Okay, without, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And that'll, two, action item 12A2. Can I get a motion, please? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, Dr. Kim? No, he wants to wait till after the presentation. All right, Mr. Portillo? Yeah, please. Thank you.
Okay, I realize I spend two years in property, commercial, residential data analytics. I have to do market research for developers and builders. And I realize you paid a lot for the study, and the fees have to go up. But 5.17 cents per square foot, that's daunting. For commercial, it's .87. Housing is atrocious, it's hard to buy. So say you want to bring your elderly parents in, you're going to build an ADU. I haven't read the 35-page document fully, but that can knock people out of financing an ADU. I understand you need revenue, but to put it on the backs of people who are already paying both property taxes, which money goes to the schools everywhere, and also ongoing payment of bond measure money, and to continue, you're making it difficult on the housing market and people who own houses. You need to really consider the advised amount of increasing it to 5.17. It's a lot of money. If you're going to build, do an add-on, it's, I think I did the math real quick, it's going to cost you $70,000. You're talking $5,700 more, and that can knock you out of the loan. And now you can't do your project, or now you're not, you're going to do less for the project. This has huge impact. Just consider that, okay? I understand it's about gaining revenue, but it'll be interesting to see how, with all the development that has gone on, how the money has been spent or put to use in terms of repairing the schools. Thank you. It's very, very important, this 5.17, okay? Thank you.
Dr. Kim?
All right, thank you, Mr. Peterson. This is, in light of this resolution coming forward to your attention, we wanted to provide some information on this developer fee request for increase. I'm going to turn it over to Krill, who will introduce our consultant that has worked on this matter. Krill?
Thank you. Good evening again, board. So this items seek to increase our developer fees, which are funds received from developers for construction and or modernization. We receive fees from both residential and industrial slash commercial developments. In order for us to increase our fees, we're required by the state allocation board to do a justification study. So we contracted with Jack Schrader and Associates to conduct the study. And so joining us tonight via Zoom is Ms. Alana Cunningham with Jack Schrader and Associates. Alana will provide an overview of the process. So without further ado, I will invite Ms. Alana to take over the presentation or the overview of the process. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a quick question for you. Thank you for the presentation, the information. Who is paying the fees? Is it the builder? Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that the developer would pay the fees, but my question is, will the developer pass on the cost to the price of the house being sold? Or resell the property, increase the price of the house or the business building? Would that, would that occur?
Is this also a one-time fee?
What were the last fee we had? I forgot. I think it's four something. I said, what were the last fee we had before the 5.17? There's a lot of project going on called, I think it's called the AD age or something, where homeowner had comforted the garage to the units or added a room in the back of the houses. It does also affect the developer fee. ADU, sorry.
I have a question, and this.
This, I'm sorry. And this may be perhaps for Ms. Branford. Do we have an analysis of, I don't know whether it's a year-over-year, but the approximate amount that we receive in developer fees, for example, last year or whenever the records might be?
Yes, we do. And this is presented to you every year around December, where we highlight how many, how much revenues we receive and the types of developments that we receive them from. So you will be seeing another report this December, because we're also required to report that out annually to you, so you can see the breakdown of the fees collected.
You mentioned, I'm talking about the person on video, you mentioned that the last fee increased with 2020?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
All right, ma'am, thank you. We don't have any further questions for you at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Alana.
All right, that'll take us to action item 12-2, the resolution 122425 about development or developer fee increase. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Mr. Rose.
I just want to share my concern, I'm not in favor of increased fees, but the last fee increase was 2020. So, you know, maybe it is time to be, you know, be up-to-dated today, but with all the prices going up, a lot of fees in food prices, gas prices, has gone up tremendously. I don't know if the fees will have any impact. People not building any more homes here, Charter Oak. We're, you know, I was wondering about that. I just wanted to make sure that we could open market for a family to move into Charter Oak. We're talking about the number of Romans coming in. But the developer fee is very little, because the only impact on adding to the units with the house, plus new homes, yeah, I get it. So, you know, that, I have to consider how I'm going to vote with this.
Okay, sir, thank you. Mr. Dr. Agler.
I also have a question. So the last time that the fees were updated was 2020. The district has the ability to do this every two years and even years. Trying to jog my own memory a little bit, was this simply an item that was not brought in 2022?
Right. So we did it in 2020. It was during COVID, and I don't recall you guys having a lot of questions, because it was during the COVID time, but we did do it then. We did not do a study in 2022. Some districts do it every two years, others just whenever they can get that study together. And so we did not do one in '22.
Thank you.
Kirill, do you have an idea of what other districts in the area are doing in regards to?
A lot of districts do adopt these fees and.
Is it about the same?
Yes. And when the bulletin came out, districts were calling, who do you use as your consultant? Because most districts will adopt the fees. Again, it helps us with our construction or any modernization. And now that we have increased, you know, our TK students, and it also does technology, infrastructure, so we can use those fees for those types of expenditures. And yes, this is not unique to Charter Oak. Most districts will adopt those fees every two years.
Thank you. Ms. Flores? All right, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Agler?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion passes 4-0. That'll take us to item number three, San Gabriel Valley Regional Occupational Program, third restated and amended joint powers agreement. Can I get a motion? Bring this forward, please.
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, I think it's a good, it's a good one. We want to continue to have that relationship with the ROP. They're doing a fantastic job over there. We have new leaders over there, and I believe this, we need to move on with it, with working with them, working with the other school district. Jeanette Flores went on the board before that, and now I'm on it, we want to continue that relationship with ROP.
Ms. Flores?
I agree.
I also agree. I started teaching through the ROP with San Gabriel Valley. So it's a, it's a great program. They support their, their teachers well, and they're great partners for us. So I'll go ahead and call for the vote, Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Agler?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, motion passes 4-0. Will take us to educational services, item number one, resolution 112425, red ribbon week for October 23rd through 31st, and I'll make a motion for that. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? No discussion, I'll call for the vote, Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Agler?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion passes 4-0. It'll take us to human resources, item number one, approval of director of fiscal services. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
I second.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Kim, do you have a recommendation?
I do. I recommend to the board Ms. Nicole Turner for the director of fiscal services position.
All right. Can I, no, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. Or any discussion? Mr. Rose.
I think she's a perfect, perfect fit for the department here. I have known her for a long time, even though we don't talk a lot. She's very, I don't know if you're a quiet person, I don't know, but she, behind the scenes, she does a lot. She does a lot, and I, I'm looking forward to see her working with Kirill, and sure we could have a sound budget down the line. Welcome aboard.
I know she's been putting.
Wait on that one.
I know she's been putting in a lot of work, filling the shoes of other people who aren't there, so we appreciate your work. So thank you. Any other comments? Then I'll call for the vote, Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Agler?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion passes 4-0.
Now, I can say welcome aboard.
Yeah, if I may say just a couple of words about Ms. Turner, Turner, Nikki has been just a long presence in our school district. She's been a leader behind the scenes. We had to nudge her and say, Nikki, you are a leader in this district, you need to wear that title as well. So we're proud of her, and we're looking forward to her leadership and just really her help in supporting our district's fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
All right, that'll take us to the approval of coordinator of curriculum instruction and innovation. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Dr. Kim, do you have a recommendation?
I do. I recommend Ms. Camille Strakula for the coordinator of curriculum instruction and innovation position.
Any discussion? I'll give something. I know Camille's been behind the scenes for most of the technology that's been going on, and I've asked her a few questions myself by yelling over a fence. But I, I know she's a resource, not only for myself, but for others in the district, and we appreciate her efforts, and it's well-deserved. Go ahead and call for the vote, Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Agler?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, also motion passes 4-0. Dr. Kim.
All right, likewise, Ms. Strakula is just really an established leader in our school, and frankly, my favorite Strakula in the school district. But I tell you, Camille is such, really forward-thinking, a visionary around the work that is ahead for our students as it relates to teaching and learning. And so we're super excited under her leadership of what these emerging technologies in artificial intelligence and how it integrates with teaching and learning is going to look like for our students. So we're excited about that, and I want to congratulate Camille.
Okay, that'll take us to item number three, the approval of the interim high school assistant principal. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Kim.
I'd like to recommend Ms. Nicole Hope for the interim assistant principal at Charter Oak High School.
Any discussion? Ms. Flores? You had that look like you wanted to talk.
She's wonderful. She taught my kids, so I'm a big fan.
Yeah, she's, you're leaving the math. My kid's favorite subject is math, and you left just as she's going up. I told her she still can ask you questions, so. All right, I'll go ahead and call for the vote, Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Agler?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, motion passes 4-0. Dr. Kim?
Ms. Hope, I mean, really, it's a loss for our students in math instruction, tough shoes to fill there, but what a teacher leader, a leader, in fact, that's going to really help our school at Charter Oak High and really do some, really things in terms of influencing the work that we have. We're proud of her to be part of that team. We're excited for her and Dr. Perez and Mr. Sweet and all the good work that's going to happen through that leadership team. Congratulations, Ms. Hope.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Once a year, yes, sir.
Well, then it happened.
I don't know.
Okay.
Does anybody want anything polled? No? Dr. Agler? No? Okay, no one wants anything polled, so with that, can I get a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Oh, Mr. Rose.
I would, I'd like to remind the board members that there is visual by the last name Rose on the list, on the circumcated. I am not in, I'm no relation with her whatsoever. Unless one member then to know.
Are you sure?
Uh, she's not a family member. How's that? Is that better? Sorry, I'm taking this. She's not related to our family members.
Okay.
She lets the board member know that I can vote on this consent calendar.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call for the vote, Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Agler?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, motion passes 4-0. That will take us down to board comments. Mr. Rose? Board comments.
Not much, I just want to welcome teachers classified staff back to school. I was there at the, at home. That was, that was a wonderful thing. That was wonderful. The excitement was there, the energy was there. The vendors were tremendous. The people, they were, they're on the, they're the pass of all these, and so I had to go through there. But there's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of commotion going on there, and it did, and a lot of shattering, and people were still happy, you know. So I'm concerned about how time flies over the summer. Some were saying, I'm ready to go to work and all that. So the energy was there. It was fantastic. My favorite part was baseball cards. So I already told Ray Peterson that I'm not going to give me my cards. I'm going to hold on my card. I think 100 years from now, I think my baseball card is valuable. Just wait. Just wait. Anyway, that baseball card was valuable, and it hit me to the point where I said, whoa, this is me. Oh, oh, okay, then I have to share that kind of reaction I had, it was mine, but no, it's sharing the card with others with, with unique experience. I appreciate that type of activities there. Everything was wonderful. The district choice was interesting, and I believe that we still have that every year, right? In the video, so we, all the ads were done by our staff. It was wonderful seeing all the staff going out, the number of promotions going out, thousand, thousand, that's fantastic. I know only get about 38 and then end up only 10 or 16, but I think we can't sit into the work and see. I know there's a lot of competition going out there. I understand that. District of choice, it's a tough one. About that. Also, let's see, let me see. Now, I understand Kirill had mentioned about the budgets from the state. I'm concerned about you not mentioning Prop 98. Well, my understanding, my understanding with the Prop 98 was supposed to be untouchable, but this budget year, the government can take the money out in the university? Is that what I'm, understand that? Can you, can I, can Mr. Peterson, if Kirill can answer these questions? I, okay, Mr. Peterson, if Cora can answer these questions?
Are you saying the Prop 98-
Prop 98.
-is the school district's base funding? The governor is not taking monies away. In fact, he's found ways to keep us at least flat funded. So no, we're not losing funding in Prop 98.
Okay. Thank you for clarification.
You're welcome.
Last comment I want to make is that what surprised me tonight is a lot of parents out there, they're kind of taking it back. And because our theme is, this is home. I want to make sure that those parents out there know they are part of us. They are. And as I asked Peterson, we can have a follow-up and see what's going on and what can we do to take care of this particular individual. They mentioned one name over and over. So I have a concern with that, and I'm sure other board trustees feel the same way. We want to, the theme is this is home. You know, I understand that. I, I heard that phrase, angel home, no, I'm sorry, angel on street, devil at home. I don't know what that phrase used to be. Is there a street angel devil home? I don't know this. What I'm saying, I don't know. What I'm saying is that at home, at home, everyone going to have problems. Problems occur at home. Family members always have some issue within the home. I think we are the same here. But, but like Dr. Kim said, we, we work together, communicate is the key. Open it up and listen to each other and find solution to the problem we have in the district. When Robert came up and addressed the board about this particular issue, I want to make sure that we all hear it, and then hopefully that we come up with the solution to have a peaceful environment at home. So looking forward to that theme throughout the school year. Back to you, Peterson.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Flores?
I want to congratulate Camille, Nicole, and Nikki. Congratulations, and really appreciate you stepping up to get to that next level and this district for supporting alumni, right? Camille, you graduated five years ago. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you for, for staying here. I also want to congratulate Dr. Maria Thompson. Congratulations. You did it. So I just want to congratulate you and continue, encourage you to continue to grow. So congratulations. We'll have to celebrate. And I also want to welcome Dr. Perez. I haven't met you yet, but one of my children is at your school, so welcome. I hear really great things, so it's exciting to have you here. Welcome. And thank you, Bob and team, for the awesome banners. Has everybody seen the banners of our graduates? Great job, Bob. I know you hung every one of them by yourself. So thank you, Dr. Kim. They're beautiful, and our community loves the banners. Our parents love the banners. So thank you for that, to you and your team. I also want to congratulate Mr. Rose. The reason he's so happy and energetic is because he's retired. So I want to congratulate him on his retirement. How many years, how many years, how many years did you teach?
Uh, overall, 24 years.
At what district?
Two districts. Covina Valley, unified the first six in the last 18 over at San Bernardino City.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Well, thank you, Ms. Flores. Thank you.
And just thank everyone for your hard work. It's going to be a great year. Thank you again to Dr. Thompson and her team that continue to support our students and our families throughout the challenges. And I want to thank the people that came to speak too. Regardless of what's happening in the nation, this is still a place of democracy here. We are still here to listen to our communities and our constituents. So thank you for participating in the democratic process. Let's have a great year. Thank you.
Dr. Aguilar?
Thank you. I would like to congratulate Dr. Kim on a well-received and successful kickoff, first as superintendent. I think it was a great meeting. You know, several of us had the opportunity to be there, and I could see how well-received it was, including feedback from various staff, teachers, and, and classified as well. So thank you very much for that and for starting the year off strong. I also got a chance to visit the high school luau as they prepared to kickoff events. I didn't get a chance to go to all the different kickoff events at the campuses, but at the different sites, but the high school, I was able to make it. And it's wonderful just to see the culture back, all the students back on campus. You know, the campuses were very busy throughout the summer, and, and now having all the student body back's been fantastic. So just wishing a really strong start of the year academically, athletically, artistically, for all of our students, TK through 12 across the district. And then finally, I think the beginning of the school year is always a great time to remind ourselves to check up on our vaccinations. We're back in groups of, of large people indoors, things like that. And as we know, as we experienced throughout the years as educators, it's often a time where we start getting some sniffles and things spreading around as we all come back together. So just want to recommend everybody to check on your vaccination status and, and, you know, if you're eligible and ready, make sure you re-up as well. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that's from a real doctor. I'm just kidding. All right. It seems like back to school went seamless for the most part. Congratulations on getting the solar going. Congratulations on not having a disaster in the parking lot at the high school with the solar going. I'm dropping my, I'm there every morning, drop my kid off, and I've really had no issues. So good job to you and your staff in having that all set up. In regards to the luau, I know Mrs. Cook has been working tirelessly throughout the summer to make sure that kids were welcomed. I guess all the ASP kids were back a week early, making a giveaway, little bags for, or welcome bags to the kids when they came back and getting the luau ready and prepping the school and getting the kids all ready. So I appreciate all her work. The volleyball team's off to a fantastic start again. I get to go to all the games now. Thanks to ROMs for allowing the team to get over there while you're having your floor done in the gym. The solar, Danny, good job in facilitating all that and getting that finally moving. It's been a long time to come. What else? The banners, I agree, look fantastic. I just want to make sure we have a process in place to upkeep them as we go. From Bonds? Near the subway? The, I know we have partners with Doran City Covina who helped with that, so thanks to them. And finally, start of the school year, it's football season. So the SoFi game is going to be fantastic. I, I just think it's a fantastic opportunity for our kids, the school. I don't know if it's televised? It won't be televised? Okay, well, yeah, you get the tickets now. Everyone should go. And then tomorrow's Canyon Country. What is that, an hour and a half drive? Yeah, Santa Clarita tomorrow. Yeah. So I'm looking forward to that, back into the light. So I appreciate all the work everyone's put in. Bob, all the work you put in, you and your team, to get the school sites ready to go. Thank you very much. All the teachers, all the preparation. Ms. Hook, thanks for all you do. And I'm looking forward to a great school year.
I have one more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I also wanted to acknowledge that we have two student teachers at Bedelo Elementary, Marissa and Hannah. They were students at Bedelo, and now they're, Dr. Thompson remembers them. Now they're student teaching at Bedelo. So I think that's, that's really cool. Yeah. They always come back. Right, Camille? They always come back.
And welcome to the three in your new positions. We look forward to seeing all the magical things you do with that. And with that, we're going to go ahead and, actually, future meeting September 18th. No need for closed session. We'll go ahead and close this meeting at 7:58.